Forum here.
We have Councilman McKinley, Councilman Williams, Councilman Sapp, Councilmember Rander.
Yep.
And I don't see Bill yet.
Will you let me know when he comes on, please? Because I can't see it. Thank you.
We're checking.
He's coming on right now.
All right. Chief said, says that he has another, do you have another meeting in progress? Post has another meeting in progress?
He may be linking into the old one.
Yep, I think that's a good chance. Let me tell him that. Did we see, I see Councilman Martini there. All right. So we have all council members. Excellent. And it is six of one, so we will go ahead and start. All right. Good evening, everyone. Like to call our May 12th, 2020 Town of Windermere Council meeting to order. We have a quorum. All council persons are in attendance. We will start with our, our flag salute. I don't know exactly how we're going to do this. Last time we skipped it. I feel bad skipping it multiple times. So on another meeting that we had with, with, with the county, we just took a second to reflect upon what it means to live in the country that we do in America. And to think about all of those who are challenged right now and have great responsibilities as they, they work to defeat COVID and we do the same to support that effort. We can do that for one minute. Thank you. I'll call our meeting back to order. Do we have anyone who has entered in that they would like to provide public comment in the chat box?
No, we did not receive any through email to Dorothy.
Okay, I do see one from Brandy that she'd like to comment after Wade Trim presents. Brandy, is that, if that's for Oakdale, I don't believe we're going to.
No, that's, that's her address.
Oh, I see. I'm sorry. Absolutely, Brandy. We will, we'll circle you back in at that time. Then without, without further delay, we'd like Wade Trim to go ahead and present the Town of Windermere Water Master Plan Presentation.
And Chief is on now.
Excellent. Thank you, Robert.
And for everybody's knowledge, this is Mike Dimko. He's the lead engineering firm with Wade Trim, the contractor, the consultant firm that we hired, the town hired to conduct a master water plan. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mike.
Great. Thank you so much for having, having me under these circumstances. I appreciate you pulling this together. You can see my screen okay?
Yes, Mike.
Okay, great. All right. Well, it's good to be back in front of you. I know we were here, we were over there before to, to walk you through the existing system you have there and and we'll, I'll refresh your memory of what this project was all about, but let me see if I can get this going. All right. So we want to discuss the mission first for this project, the, the the existing layout, remind you that, the proposed layout and the phasing, and then talk about the, the fire flows, because the fire flows really affected the ultimate layout for this. Then talk about cost and which I think is what, what people are going to be very interested in. And then we have Mark Brewer on the call. He'll be, he'll be audio only today to, to talk about funding options. So the mission. So as we worked through the mission with your staff, and it was determined that the mission should be to develop a reasonable plan to supply all homes with good water quality as well as fire protection. To understand the ability to provide water for future expansion of the system, to document the positive impacts of, of, of the water utility, and then to develop an understanding of the funding mechanisms available. So we'll, we'll, hopefully, as we get through this, you'll see that we've, we've gone through each of these. So the existing layout is shown here. So the, the existing, the parcels that are already served by by Orange County Utility Water are noted in gray on this map. The connection points at the town limits are, they're existing already. Those are shown with the stars. The so 41% of the parcels in the town are already served by Orange County Utilities. And the driver to expand into the rest of the town is, is really safety, environmental protection and reliability. We'll get into those a little bit more detail in the draft report that we've submitted, but when it comes to safety, the water is, Orange County Utility Water is monitored and controlled. It's tested. Safety also, we're going to talk a lot about the fire flows is a big part of this. Environmental protection, there's a lot of wells which are penetrations into the groundwater and there's drawdown occurring from the private wells in the area around the, around the Florida protected water bodies. And then reliability, this, this system would be under pressure. It will have emergency backup powers required for, for Orange County Utilities. So you won't lose pressure and even in situations where you don't have power, you would have reliable water supply. So we developed and calibrated a hydraulic model to analyze the existing system and found that it has sufficient pressure and flows for the current, for the existing system. However, there was some fire flow limitations even, even to the, you know, covering the existing area. And then we developed two future scenarios with a hydraulic model to look at first infilling all of, all of the town within the, within the town limits. And then also looking at some of these areas directly adjacent to the town to see how, how this expansion would, would affect those areas as well. And what we determined was that, that these connection points have sufficient flow for the, for the area. Orange County Utility can provide that, that flow. What we also see is that the, the main trunks through the town and actually most of the lines within the town are, that existing are sized adequately to, in order to allow expansion off of those, those main, those main lines. So I think, and then I guess we'll say that, and we'll get into that, but a few of these lines do, will require an upsizing due to fire flows, but none of the main, none of the main lines actually are affected by that. So the proposed layout and phases. So this, this is an overview showing the, the three phases. Again, the connection points are the, are the, the yellow stars. The existing pipes are shown in blue. So those are the ones that were on that existing layout before. All the proposed new pipes are in green. And then in purple are the, the small number of pipes that need to be upsized. And I'll get into the reason behind those, but they're, I believe in all cases, they're, they're due to fire flow requirements. So what you'll see are three phases that we're proposing here, a northern phase in red, a central phase that's outlined in orange, and a southern phase that's outlined in yellow. There's no required order to these. They're roughly of equal scale. The borders were chosen, the interface between phases was, was chosen in part because there's no, there will be no crossover between contracts where, so that they don't require any order to them and contractors, different contractors could be selected and not have to point fingers at each other because they'll be connecting in at, at existing, to existing lines at the borders. And I'm going to go into each, each section a little bit here as we go forward. So the northern phase. So 376 parcels that were, are not currently connected to Orange County Utilities would be, would be added under this northern phase of the project. And I'll point out that the, the only area within the town limits that our analysis showed a water age concern was on Bay Shore Drive. As you can see, it's, it's a long line that does not have a large number of homes on it. So it's kind of got low demand on a long line, which is, and it's, it's only one direction. So that's one where during final design, we would want to look at putting in a automatic flushing device perhaps at the end. There are a few, few things that could be done during, during final design and that, that have to be, have to be worked out, but, but one option would be an automatic flushing device at the end. We showed those in the draft report, show you some options, but these can be below grade, they dechlorinate the water, and then they can have a discharge point to, to a stormwater outfall type, type of discharge, charge point that allows you to flush those lines to maintain high quality water, because if the water sits in a pipe and ages, it can, it can deteriorate in quality. You start to lose some of the chlorine residual, for example. And then there, there are other spots within the, within the town that during final design, you might want to put in a, an automatic flushing device, not necessarily for water age issues, but just because flushing of, of distribution systems is, is a good practice. Orange County Utilities will want to do that. And if you have them designated in advance, they don't have to go out and, and do that at hydrants. So it's, it's a little bit less invasive if there's something that's already out in the system. Just something to consider. And then the central phase is basically between Sixth Avenue and, and the northern phase there, which is, I think, at the canal crossing on Main Street. With this, this has 223 parcels, which are not currently connected to Orange County Utilities, would be added. You can see that there is one line in purple, which needs to be upsized along Sunset. That's for fire flows. Again, I'm, when we talk about the fire flows, I'll, I'll go back in to, to, to touch on those. But the, the southern border is along Sixth Avenue and then along, comes up Magnolia and crosses over Fifth Ave. It's kind of a zigzag there in order to, to allow that transition in, in already, in an area that already has a line. And then the southern phase has 241 parcels. It would add to the Orange County Utilities System. And there are two areas really, or three, where, where, where lines need to be upsized versus where that have existing service in order to allow for, for fire flows. To talk about fire flows. The, the so some of the town is currently equipped with fire hydrants, but a large portion of the town doesn't have, have hydrants currently. In addition, some of the existing hydrants don't have, according to modeling, under worst case scenario, may not have the, the fire flow required for the size of the homes. This chart talks about the, shows the, 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 the square footage area for homes from NFPA to, and correlates those to a minimum fire flow required. And it also shows the number of, of structures that you have within the town in, there in those ranges. As you can see, all, the vast majority of the homes are below 9,800 square feet, which would require 2,000 gallons per minute. And that's a flow that can be reached, can be, can, can be met pretty much throughout the entire town. There's a one or two small exceptions to that where we have to drill in a little deeper, but when it comes to larger homes, are, there are a handful of larger homes that do require higher flows. And, and we'll, we'll show those here on this next map. So this is, this shows the distribution of some of the larger homes. The ones above 9,800 square feet are shown in red. The ones between 5,000 and 9,800 square feet are shown in yellow. Again, even the yellow ones can, can be met with 2,000 gallons per minute. And that, that can be maintained pretty much throughout the, the system. And I'll, I'll get into, I'll show that again here on the next slide. But it's, it's some of those red properties, the ones that we're most concerned about having to have about 3,500 square gallons per minute, but we're largely able to meet those. So this graphic is similar. What it shows overlaid now are the available fire flow at all of the nodes within the system. These are not necessarily hydrants. These are really all I guess these are, these are the one, these are all the nodes really within the system, I guess, that are near the larger red homes. As you can see, we ran this scenario up to 5,000 gallons per minute and most of them can meet that. There are, if you drill into certain areas, there are, there are some limitations throughout, throughout the system, but these are the ones that are, the nodes that are near the, the larger homes and for the most part, they can meet the, the, the high demand, even near the red ones, you can combine hydrants to get up to, to the 3,500 gallons per minute. So this is the, this is looking at the existing network and the fire flow requirements required. And this is, this is highlighting the lines that needed to be upgraded and what we're able to, to get to with, with these. So if you look in the northern, the northern phase, we really only had to upsize one line there on Willow Lauren Lane. And we're able to get to, to the 2,000 gallons per minute required in that area. On Sunset Lane, we're able to get to 1,800 gallons per minute by upsizing that lane, that, that line to eight inches. And then in the, the other areas, we're, we're able to get up to 2,500 or 2,000 gallons per minute, which, which is able to service those, those homes in those areas. So this shows the proposed hydrants. Now, these are going to be fine tuned during, during final design. But this was shown, for example, and this is how, how we base, what we base the costs on for, for these locations. Definitely during, during design of the, you know, final design throughout this, we're going to, we're going to need to find tunes, but these, these identify the roughly the number of hydrants required. And so in the northern phase, there's 23 additional fire hydrants added. In the central, there's 16. And in the southern, there's 18. Costs, I'm sure that's what, what everyone's most interested in here. So what we did was really break this down by each part of the design. So removing the smaller mains, we had a cost per linear foot, installing your PVC mains, installing hydrant assemblies, installing gate valves, paving roads. This doesn't include paving any roads that are not currently paved. This is to repave roads where we're going to have to do work in a paved area. There's a linear foot allowances for maintenance of traffic, for survey, for video inspections, for erosion and sedimentation control, deep watering permitting. And then we did that by, street by street in order to build up to our estimate. I will say that, that our estimates are really based on, on the, on the full on each phase at the phase level. For example, service connections, we just told them for the phase, we didn't do that by street. All the contingencies are added on the, on the phase level. So it's, it really is rolled up. You can't really look in, drill down and look at what one street would cost. It really is based on doing a whole phase. And at this initial planning level, we're talking about a 40% contingency with 6% inflation built in for, for when the work would get done. And within that contingency, we would see things like driveway aprons, if we had to go through that, through an area where we had to, we were off on the side of the road, but, but did have to cut through, through aprons. Things like that would fall into the contingency. So the cost estimate. So as you can see, the phases are roughly equal in scale. We're talking about, about almost 4 million for the north phase, 3.1 for central, 3.2 for south. You do see a lot more residents connected on the north phase. So you see a cost per connection that is lower for the, for the north phase. But these, we believe these phases are large enough that you're going to get a lot of interest from contractors, that they're going to, you know, want to participate in this. And what we, we see is the cost per linear foot is pretty similar through these, although the cost per connection is, is higher. And it, the reason the north ends up costing a bit more is that there is more linear footage and there's, there's more hydrants is, is part of that. And then, did, is Mark on the call? Did he call in?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mark's there, Mike. I see him.
Okay, great. Mark, do you want to take over on the funding part?
Absolutely.
I'm going to mute myself here.
Okay. So just to take a couple of minutes, I think you can see from the slide, we took a full-scale approach to reviewing the aspects of your system and to try to maximize the opportunities to keep the overall cost of implementation down. And the result of that were four major funding programs. Two of them are grants, one is a loan product, and another is actually some potential direct help for citizens. And I'll kind of go real quickly through each of those. The state revolving fund loan program is a loan program. It is at a subsidized interest rate that is much lower than you would typically have in a financing product compared to, say, bonds. It's by definition 40% or more discount from what you would be able to compete with in the bond market.
Mark, if I could stop you right there real quick. Michael, if you can go to the next slide, please. Thank you.
Okay. And so now I'm doing it out of order, but I'll back up and go to the beginning real quick. As far as grants, the first two programs, one is through the Water Management District, and there is a limitation of up to 50% grant. And so we would actually pair that with the legislative process grants. Those typically are between half a million and a million dollars and require a legislative delegation type process to garner support. And that actually ends up being funded through the state budget and then back through DEP, who actually manages, it's pretty much the same folks that manage the state revolving fund. It's a small arm of those folks. The Water Supply Restoration Funding Program is actually a, in the event any of the onsite wells are contaminated or have other issues, there's a potential for funding to go directly to the resident in that situation to get hooked up to the, to the system. And so there's a subsidy there. And so overall, we would be looking at, looking at 50% funding through the South Florida Water Management District. Depending on the phasing and the timing of rolling out the projects, which we work very closely with, with Mike and his folks to make sure that as those, those recommendations about when to take those projects forward align very well with the available funds and the timing of those funds. So the overall approach though is use the Water Management District funding first, pair that with legislative process grants and the balance of it would be financed at the lowest possible rate available, which is through the state revolving loan fund program. And then for some of the issues that might be on private property, then we can point those folks towards how they can acquire direct funding to hook up. And I think if you maybe go to the next slide. No more slides. Okay, good. So one thing that was not available and, and it's not quite fleshed out at this point is the potential for the federal government to, and Congress, to actually implement and authorize direct funding to communities or through existing programs for stimulus slash COVID-related issues. There have been a number of proposals that have ebbed and flowed, I'll call it. Has, nothing has been approved at this point, but it does look like there is, I'll say, significant support for eventually getting some funding to communities. And although that will probably take a little while to come to fruition and become available, it might actually line up very nicely with these projects and because we still have some design and, and then go into implementation. So we would continue to pursue applications for the specific projects that are going to be going on, on a regular basis. And then of course, we always keep our ear to the ground to make sure if any new developments such as the, the COVID funding comes through, then we would look to maximize that funding opportunity as well with the entire goal of keeping the total cost of delivery to the, to the absolute minimum for your residents. And I'm, I think at this point, I'm happy to answer any questions or I'll turn it back over to you, Mike.
Mike, Mike, real quick, before you go, just to kind of add a little bit to what Mark said there. One important thing to remember with this project is it will require coordination with Orange County Utilities. And related to the funding as well. And Mike mentioned in the beginning, the system, once it would, once it's designed and put into operation, it would be become part of the Orange County Utilities. So they would actually be the owner of the system like they are now with the water system within the town. So this would be expanding onto their system. So just as, as we talk about funding for the future for this to happen, it, it will require coordination with Orange County. So I just wanted to make sure that was very clear. Thank you.
Correct. Once we went through the design phase, these are just construction costs here. But once we went through the design phase, we'd need to coordinate with Orange County Permit through them. And once the project is completed, it'd be like a subdivision where they came in, installed potable water, then we turned it over to the utility owner, which is Orange County, and they would maintain it for the future. So maintenance is a giant cost and it's actually an additive to us not to have to maintain it.
And so everybody's where, as Mike and our team went through the process, we had quite a bit of coordination with Orange County Utilities, developing the master plan. Mike and his team met with them several times, discussed the model. So we, that communication has already begun with this master plan. That communication has already begun with this master plan process. And also, just so everyone is aware too, with the fire flow issue, Mike and his team also coordinated with Oakley Fire and with the the fire folks to provide protection to the town, to make sure that they were understanding and gave their input into the process.
And speaking of the fire protection, the the fire hydrants that are located on the lines, Mike, if I'm if I'm correct, are in general locations. They don't have to be exactly where we're showing them now. They can move a little bit here and there. So if you see it and it's in front of your house and and you don't think it's it's an ideal location, then, you know, we deal with that when we do and go into the construction design phase.
Right, that's, those are going to be resolved during final design.
And based on your experience, when you get to those three million dollar numbers, is there a percentage that we should assume would be design costs? Or what do you think a design cost would be per phase? And then, why did you determine each phase, meaning why the the areas? Was it geographical location? Was it because of point of connections? So the yeah, the design costs and also the reasoning for the phases?
Sure. Typical design costs are going to range from fifteen to seventeen percent usually of of the construction, is what we'd say. So so you can extrapolate from that. Again, there still is a forty percent contingency on on these figures. So we are talking a planning level estimates. So, you know, I don't, it's not to say that 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 it would fall within that, but there is the opportunity that 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 the cost could come down as the as the you know, more detail is added in during final design. As far as the the phase look splits, let me pull up that that sheet. So when we looked at phasing this, we really did look at the, we really wanted to have locations where the the borders were not in areas where we had to put in new pipe. The advantage there is, if you have a, if you if you had a line, say, on this graphic along Seventh Avenue, there is a new line. If we had made that the border, then the contractor, one of the contractors is going to have to put that in either in the central or in the southern phase. The other one's going to be dealing with them or dealing with new pipe. It may also, it would also require that whichever one installs that along Seventh Avenue, that that phase is done first. So this way, you don't get contractors pointing at each other. They're dealing with existing conditions. You also don't have any required order to the phases, so so that the town can select which phases they want to do in which order. And then as far as the size of them, we wanted to make sure that they were of a scale that you could get economies of scale by the contractor ordering large enough quantities and also that you would get. If you have projects that are too small, if you're talking about just a street or two, you're going to limit the contractor's interest in in participating in a project that's small. This way, you can get some of the the better contractors are going to want to come out to for a project of this kind of scale.
All right. Thank you, everybody. The forty percent contingency fee at this point, is that going to narrow down as we dive deeper into the plan?
Exactly right, yeah. So the way the cost estimating, construction cost estimating is done is that early on, when when we're talking about preliminary designs, you have a much higher contingency. And then as as each, as each level of design is completed, you'll you'll dial in to that that number much, much closely, and that percentage goes down to when as it gets into the final design, you'll be, you know, closer to like a ten percent design contingency for things that that may not have been considered during during the actual during the design, but but at a planning level contingency, those levels kind of stand.
Also, also, there are some homes in various areas that are outlined here that do currently have water. I know those those pipes would probably need to be upsized. Did we factor that in when we considered per hookup cost?
Correct, yes. So the, when we talk about the 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 cost per connection, let me get that down here, that would be for the new, that's the the cost per for new connections, connections that were. That that's just to give you a scale of the cost benefit analysis. So that's the the overall cost divided by the number of new residential connections in that phase. The, as far as the upsizing of existing lines, there, like I said, there are not many of those. And that is typically, that's been for, really just for for fire flows. I guess with the exception, there's one area, the Wonder Lane, where there it's, it's a, there isn't really a line running down Wonder Lane. There are long service connections out to the to Maguire Road. So that would be, the intent would be to replace that with with an actual line down down Wonder Lane as part of this project.
All right, and I have one more question, then we'll open it up to council. Your funding options there, what is everyone's feel in terms of, I know, I know things are a bit unknown at this particular moment, but what do you feel like our funding opportunity percentages, you know, what's our shot there?
I defer to Mark on it.
Yeah, that's fine. I do believe that there's a fairly good chance, if you wanted me to put a percentage on it, I would say if the projects are are right-sized, if you will, for maximum funding, then I think you've probably got around a seventy percent chance of water management district funding. If you have strong support from your legislators, there's probably around a seventy to eighty percent chance on the legislative process grants. We've had a lot of success in both of those areas. And then I think there's a hundred percent chance of success with the state revolving fund loan program for the balance of whatever.
What what do you think that that does as far as reducing the town's ultimate burden percentileized for cost, I think is made part of the question?
Okay, so I think the, probably the maximum amount, based on the size of the projects that are that are anticipated, is you could be looking at as little as, and this is probably a little optimistic, about thirty percent that you would actually have to borrow, and probably most likely between forty and fifty percent of the total project cost would be, still need to be financed after grant opportunities are exhausted.
Mark, are those, are those generally, those aren't general fund dollars? Are those like like set aside or amendment one dollars?
Yeah, so the the first one, the water management district is well-established funding and and there's a process for that. So I don't see that going away. The legislative process is, there's a, it used to be called a community budget issue request process, and it is a, has evolved over time. The the good thing now is that projects that have situations like they're protecting or adjacent to outstanding Florida waters and other other environmental important situations, which water is always a a good one to have, especially when you're taking out the number of, or you would be replacing the service for a fairly large number of of wells. That's what's going to get, I think, the water management district's interest is there's always consumptive use and the lack of control over private wells is a is a hot button for them. It's also a good, a good selling point to the legislative process. So that is not, as you said, it's not general fund at the state level. It's actually projects that that compete to some degree. We can't ever forget how important the, what I call the hollering and shouting that goes on in the back room. But I think that these projects have enough touch points that it should get someone's attention to be able to carry the ball.
And then, I have a few things. I know that when you talked about the next stimulus package, I think that Speaker Pelosi was just about to roll out a three trillion dollar stimulus package. I know that, you know, with a lot of smaller municipalities where we're not able to obtain those funds, and they're trying to trickle it down to municipalities of less than either five hundred thousand or fifty thousand populations. So hopefully that that gets passed and we're able to get some more money to leverage to pay for these projects. And when we split it up between the three different tiers, you know, is there a way you can just, because it's on new customers, just make it even for everybody that, it doesn't matter if I live up in the north phase, central phase, or south phase, everybody just pays the exact same amount. All you do is add the total amount and then just allocate that monies as the the amount that they would pay. So somebody's not paying thirteen thousand just because they're in the north, and then seventeen thousand because they're in the south. So we can do it any which way you want to do it.
Well, again, too, when it comes down to the individuals, there's there's also the aspect of fire protection within the town. Even if you have, I don't believe that this is meant to be only the residents who don't have service would would pay anything. I think the rate structure needs to be reviewed and and as part of this, because there is, there's an advantage to everyone in the town for everyone to have, you know, proper fire protection.
Agreed.
Sounds good. Counsel, so I want to make sure that, since we don't, are not in our typical format, I want to make sure that all council members have the opportunity to get their questions answered. So if it pleases council, I'm just going to go ahead and do a roll call. We will start with Councilperson McKinley for any questions, comment.
Yeah, the plan looks great. I'm glad to see that we're proceeding with it. The only question that I have is it appears that some of the lines are going to support two thousand gallons per minute. Is that correct?
That some of them wills, will support two thousand gallons per minute? Yeah, yes.
Right. Okay. What happens, what's the impact if someone decides to do a tear down on a house that is presently at two thousand or would be at two thousand gallons per minute, and they build a larger house that required thirty seven fifty? What would be the impact?
It's it's certainly something we have to consider in areas where we have 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 some limited flows and how how they would get the the fire protection that they need. And again, this is certainly an improvement over what is existing there at this time. There are things in the fire code that reduce how much fire flow you need. Things like setbacks from neighboring properties. If your setbacks are over certain percentages, you get a reduction in in the required fire flows. A lot of these larger houses have that. They're on larger properties as well, so that helps. There's also building materials that can be used that can help with that. And there's also sprinkler systems, although most folks don't like to have those in their personal residences. It is it is possible. So to some extent, what could be done is to, when when the building is being reviewed, when the plans are being reviewed, they could be notified, hey, this is how much is there? You have to 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 design to that or to to make design considerations that that allow for the fire flow.
Just to add to what Mike said, you're exactly right. You know, I think the important part is the knowledge that a developer, builder, owner would have of this is what's available, this is what there is what is there. As they make that decision to tear down, rebuild something larger that may not be adequate. There are, as Mike said, design opportunities for them to to account for it, but it's, it really comes on their responsibility to do what they need to do. You know, the town would be providing what they need to provide. If they need to do something else, that's what they need to do.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
But the key is, the the key there being there are methodologies to to mitigate that situation. So, okay. Councilperson, any other comment, questions?
Yeah, actually, I I had similar quest, or question to council member McKinley's. But also, I've asked in the past about private well use and people who wish to continue to use their private wells. And I've heard that, I I heard earlier the comment that that would be encouraged for use for irrigation and things like that. But I'm wondering if there are any implications for pursuing the funding sources should our residents choose to continue to use private wells?
Let me start by answering that, and then I'll pass it off to Mark on the funding part. But I I think typically what would happen is that when a line is run in front of your home, that you are typically not required to connect to it. However, the, you would have a difficult time re-permitting your wells. So if you needed to get a new well put in, you would probably have difficulty permitting it. You'd be encouraged at that time to connect to the potable water system. The, as far as irrigation, irrigation would, we want that to be on on irrigation wells, which are typically, you know, not not quite the same as as the as the potable water wells. And then I'll pass it off to Mark as if there are any funding requirements tied to that.
So in the past, when we're very careful about saying what will happen and and causing any kind of restrictions, but I think the general idea is that by and large, the that being able to utilize what they would see as a controlled situation as far as usage, they're going to see that as a benefit. And I do think that if there were a carte blanche, we're going to allow everybody to continue using those particular kind of wells, then they're going to have some questions about the groundwater withdrawal and and the effects of that. But the way I would approach it is that if there was a reasonable percentage, say, ten, fifteen, maybe not more than twenty percent of those that might remain in use for a different purpose other than potable water, that could be an acceptable range for them to feel like, okay, well, not everybody's going to take it out. And but it would allow for some flexibility for those folks that really, really want to use it. But I do think they're, and I'm not an engineer, but my understanding is you're actually withdrawing water from a different portion of the aquifer. And so they might be encouraged to put in an actual irrigation well, and they might be able to do that. But I understand people have their well, they don't want to lose the opportunity to use it, but that's really more on a on a permitting side, but it would be a question we need to to address during the funding stage.
An education campaign involved, or it just makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we we've seen this in the past, and they get the original workshop as well, is that we're not going to force anybody to hook up. It's it's if your current system fails, your current well system fails, you'd apply for a permit through Department of Health, and they would ask, is there potable water available to that site? Which you'd have to say yes. But our ordinance would say, okay, once your system fails, then you'd have to hook up. But you can still use your existing system, you know, for irrigation. But if you just spend a bunch of money and build a well, that's not saying, okay, in a year when we build this system or two years, we build a system that you're going to be required to hook up. Once that system that that's existing fails, then you would be required to hook up. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Thank you. Question, answer.
Do you mind if I say something real quick? When it comes to financing mechanisms such as the SRF loan program, they do generally have requirements like mandatory hookup that's a little more restrictive than what was just mentioned. So that might be something that we need to navigate as well. But that 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 would be a little bit down the line.
And with that, can we tie in, because I know with some systems that you have in other counties, you know, when you do an SRF, you can't drop the rate lower than X amount. Whether you can require, or you see to bill X amount to make sure that it's not only paying for the operational maintenance costs, but also the construction costs?
That's correct. There would be an evaluation of of the rate structure and the the repayment stream. And it would have to be demonstrated that it would be able to handle the the debt load on an annual basis.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilperson, did you have any further questions?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilperson Martini?
Yes, thank you. Great presentation and and love the maps. Very, very legible. Just one quick question on timeframe or construction for each phase. Approximately how how long would would that take? And would the phases be done concurrently or? Approximately how, how long would, would that take? And would the phases be done concurrently or different timeframes? What, what would your recommendation be?
Well, I think, you know, I have to probably put a little more thought into the, into the length of time. But I would think this would be the, on the scale of, of a year per phase, I think. And the, I would recommend them being not done at the same time, but in phase from a, and just typically from, you know, from, from, from an engineering standpoint, that it would be perhaps overly disruptive to the town to have all of it going on at once. It's a lot to oversee as well. And you also then have the opportunity to, to have some lessons learned perhaps that you might want to put. After, after your first phase, you might say, you know, hey, we want to put these additional restrictions on the contract for that they, you know, can't work on Tuesdays because of something or whatever. You know, that, that might be, that would be my recommendation. I, I couldn't say that, you know, from a funding standpoint, it wouldn't be better to get them all done now because of stimulus or something like that. But from, from typically, from, from just a engineering standpoint, that would be my recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Anything further, Councilperson Martini?
No, that's it. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, sir. Councilperson Sap?
No, no, I'm good. I, I sit on this board, you know, so I have nothing further. But I will say, you know, thank you to Mike, Brad and Mark. I think they've done a good job, you know, with this. They were very intent on listening, you know, to what the feedback was, you know, for people that were on the board. And they did a great job putting this presentation together. So thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
And Chris, I apologize. I should have let you introduce this item. The, the new format got me, so I'll make that up to you.
Perfect. Scott did a great job.
Thank you, guys. All right. And Councilperson Williams?
I love the plan. I'm so happy that we're going and, you know, we've got to step in the right direction. I don't really have any questions. I think everybody covered the ones that I was thinking about. So I'm good.
Thank you, Councilperson. So Robert, at this point, we don't need a vote on this item. We just, do we just need consenses from, from council to move forward with the next steps?
We would like consent from the council to, number one, we have Brandy that we still need to address her questions. But also I would like, it'd be nice to have a motion to move forward with the draft plan so I can move it into at least negotiating with local, state and federal legislators and saying, listen, here's our plan. Similar to what Oakland did with their wastewater. I know we're not going to be available for CBG, but at least I can show them, hey, this is a blessed plan. We have been putting money away for the last three years for the actual design. So even with that ten percent, we may be able to move forward with the design of at least one of the phases. And we'll have to work that out through a workshop with town council.
Right. And there actually may be some CBG funds dropping down. We just need to kind of see how it all plays out here on the COVID response. Sounds good. All right. So Brandy, are you, are you available and ready to comment?
Yeah, I can.
Thank you, Brandy.
Sure. I have, do you want me to say my name and address? Is it all right since I wrote it?
Go ahead and say it for the recording, if you would. Thank you.
Yep, it's Brandy Haynes, eight three five Oakdale Street. So I have one kind of smaller question and then one kind of more detailed, I guess. So the one question would be in terms of if Orange County is the water supply, would they also end up being our sewer supply in the future if we do a sewer system?
I should probably defer to Scott on that one, but the, the short answer is this is a water project and I don't believe that that would mandate Orange County utility to be your sewer provider anyway.
It would, it would be up to the council on what position they would want to go. But maintenance of a sewer treatment plant is pretty hefty. I just don't think our town could support. That would be just my personal observation on, on knowing these things to be an enterprise fund large enough to support it. So certainly it could be something we could discuss at a few, future date, but it'd be to the council's discretion whether they wanted to take on that burden or not.
Yeah, depending upon who we use as proximity and capacity. That capacity that is not already committed for, whether it be through Horizons West or somebody else. And then proximity, hopefully those lines get closer and closer so we're not paying a lot more money. But again, you have to look at the design. It's going to be about two million dollars alone. You have to look at lift stations, gravity lines, all that stuff. So it's, it's a lot more costly and there's a lot more sweat equity that has to go into that actual design.
Okay. Then the other part of that question specifically would be, does anyone know approximately what water bills cost from the Orange County utility or wherever you guys said the source was?
I, I don't have that information handy, but it is available readily and I can follow up.
Okay.
Are any of the people on here currently hooked up to water? Could they answer that?
I'm currently hooked up to water and my water bill monthly for the two of us usually runs thirteen to fourteen dollars.
Okay, okay. Okay, now my other question is, and my husband and I, he's here as well, but we weren't in agreement on our understanding of what was some of the stuff that was presented. So for a clarification question first, the price list that said, you know, the thirteen thousand, thirteen thousand and seventeen thousand for the south part of town, would that be the individual residence hookup cost after the project is built?
No, this is not a funding mechanism. This was just to kind of indicate the cost effectiveness within each phase. How many, it's really the overall cost and how many new, new residents are connected. Again, I wouldn't recommend anything where those people who are already connected paid nothing because there is a benefit to everyone to have, have fire flow, for example, within the town. There's also environmental benefits to everyone. Sure that those new residents who are now provided access have a disproportionate benefit. So that would need to be analyzed when you, when you do your rate study. And also this doesn't take into account any of this funding benefits that Mark, that Mark discussed.
Okay, so as of right now, we have no idea how much it would cost for each individual to tie into the line.
That's correct.
Okay.
And also, go ahead.
I can tell you that when I hooked on several years ago, it was twenty-seven hundred dollars was what they charged me to connect to Orange Utilities.
And that's, and that's Orange County's connection meter.
Correct.
So that's, I don't think, I think Brandy's kind of looking more at what's the construction and the infrastructure for a resident cost.
Yeah, sometimes when you look at, you know, other municipalities or counties, they look at connection fees and what they used to call transmission infrastructure extension fees, which means, yes, you would be the one that pays that fifteen thousand dollars, whatever it'd be for a connection fee for, to recruit the cost for the total amount of construction. But it would be up to the council of whether, how they want to figure out how to do the, pay on this, whether it just be through the bond, the SRF loan, or getting those, those earmarks, which from what I'm hearing is the way that they want to go. But as far as the county, they would, you know, you'd have a sub out and you'd be responsible from the point of connection meter all the way back to your house.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
I think it's also important to note that we can't put ourselves in the funding pool for eligibility perspective unless we have at least a draft plan that's pretty close to, to, to the final cost. Is that accurate?
Yeah. And can I add this too, that realizing that's the cost per connection estimate, but to the extent grants are available, there's no payback. And the construction term for, or the term for a construction loan under the SRF program is a twenty-year, twenty-year term. So the effect of that on, you know, current rates, it's not fifteen thousand dollars out of pocket. That would be spread over time. And of course, there's operation and maintenance costs of, of every system that would be in your rates. So that's just something to keep in mind when you look at, okay, what's, you know, what am I going to have to pay right now? That would be spread over time in the, in the plan that, that we're presenting.
Sounds good.
I had one other question, if I may. I had a question from a resident. Asked me if we know any, what, what percentage of residents would be interested in putting up the water?
I'm sorry, what percentage of residents? I, that's my audio cut out.
What percentage of residents would want to, to have the county water? Are we going to do some type of survey to survey the residents that don't have water? See if they're interested in hooking up?
This sounds going in and out, but I'm assuming that, you know, how many, what percentage of residents are currently on the water system? Or how many, what is the percentage that aren't on the water system? And can we do a survey of those that are currently not on the water system to see if they'd be willing to go ahead?
Yeah, it sounds like what percentage of people want it.
Correct, yes.
And, yeah, because as I said, forty-one percent, I believe, have water now. But as far as the demand for it, that, that I do not know.
So I think, I, I think from a, from a town perspective, if, if we were to adopt the plan to move forward, the final plan anyways, to move forward, you then move into a situation where, much like Robert said, you may not be, you may not have to hook up at the initial, at the initial time, but down the road, the permitting issue with having a new well dug or the funding restriction is going to eventually put you into a situation where you'll need to hook up, right?
Right. That's correct.
Okay, I just want to clarify for everybody. So we do know that by moving forward, you know, this, this eventually puts everyone in a hookup situation at some point in time. It may be a few years down the road. It may be five years down the road. But at some point, you would find yourself in a, in a mandatory hookup connection, the situation. Okay, if there's no further questions, then I am looking for a motion to give, to give staff direction to move forward with a draft water plan.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the, the Water Master Plan, you know, as presented today.
Motion by Councilperson Sap, looking for a second.
I'll second.
I'm sorry. So who was that second? Was that Councilperson Andrew?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilperson Andrew. Any further discussion, council? Begin voting with Councilperson Martini? Councilperson McKinley?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Unanimous council for that motion. All right. Next up is new business. We are looking for a motion to approve our town council meeting minutes for April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty. That was our, our council meeting from just a few weeks ago. We have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Councilperson McKinley, the motion maker. Second?
Second.
Second was Councilperson Sap, I believe?
It was not.
Okay.
Williams.
It was Councilperson Williams. Thank you, Councilperson Williams. Sorry, it's a little harder when we can't see it. Any discussion? Seeing none, begin voting with Councilperson Andrew?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, council. It's approved unanimously. We have no contracts and agreements. Financial items, our item D this evening is item I, temporary use permit program for certain temporary signs, outdoor retail sales and restaurant seating as well as small tents. This is a board option. And part of our, I'm going to let, I'll let town manager Smith present, I believe, but I want to make sure that everyone understands the impetus behind this is that we would do what we could as a community, consistent with other towns and municipalities, to support small business as we enter, hopefully enter a recovery stage from the COVID nineteen.
Yes, through discussions with the Chamber of Commerce, you know, we're always looking for ways that we can help support and benefit the local restaurants, retail, so on and so forth. And what we've seen through Orange County and the city of Orlando and some other jurisdictions, as recently as Winter Garden, when I went there on Saturday, what they're doing is loosening their land development regulations to allow for certain things in order for them to be able to abide by the CDC guidelines, you know, by providing them more outdoor seating, by loosening the restrictions as it relates to signage. They, you can have more signage to advertise, yes, you're open. You have, you know, deals, you have this, you have that. So when we first took a look at this, it was mostly for, again, those retail and restaurants. Then over the weekends, you know, the barber shops and the salons get opened. Coincidentally, my wife decided to cut my hair on Friday night. So then, of course, on Monday, they open up barber shops. And, you know, when they go into phase two, we want to look at, again, how do we help out gyms, yoga studios, stuff that aren't in the phase one. So we can amend this to be a living, breathing document, but mostly as saying that we're going to relax these regulations for, I would say, for a maximum of ninety days. You can go ahead and reduce that if you see, okay, everything's recovering, everybody's open for business. But if you put a, a minimum date on it, then you're pretty much, you know, closing yourself in or boxing yourself in. So a maximum day would be appreciated on the resolution. But also giving the town manager some additional leeway. When more executive orders, I'm able to negotiate with those business owners. An example would be, let's say that you own a yoga studio in the town of Windermere. Maybe we can allow them to utilize the basketball court in the morning when people aren't using it. Or they can use the pavilion, or they can use the tennis courts when people aren't using them, or a portion of the tennis courts. Or they can use an open air area that they can hold their yoga. Same thing with the gyms, if we can provide them that, or that ability. And for people to utilize parking spaces for their residents or for the shop owners to, to expand that, that capacity. Because right now, twenty-five percent, it's hard for them to justify actually opening up. And that's what you've seen again in Orlando, Orange County and Winter Garden. You see, I mean, they're pretty much on the street and even in Park Avenue and Winter Park, they shut down that entire strip for Mother's Day weekend. So it's every little bit helps for the, the stores right now.
So one of the comments that I would like to add to Robert's presentation there is this is not, this would not take away the requirement for those businesses to, you know, practice social distancing, utilization of PPE, all, any other restrictions that are upon any business. What we're, what we're seeking to do is to make sure that those businesses have the opportunity to let individuals know that they're open and maybe make reopening economically viable and safe at the same time. So what we're looking to do is not back people into a corner so they feel like they need to pack out a small space. What we can do is give them some options there so they can actually open and protect and do that in a safe way. One other comment that I have, you know, there is some cost for businesses in terms of this. So if we're going to do it, I would, I would recommend that we do it for, you know, a period of ninety days to get started. And then what we can do is when we, if council's amenable to this, we can look at this as we move forward to see how the recovery is going, to see whether we have any further closures or rolling closures or anything. And then we could extend for ninety days if that were needed and, and if it were be, if it was a benefit. Also, if people weren't taking advantage of that, we don't want to see that situation. I don't think that'll happen. But we want to make sure that we have some, you know, you know, some choices in either way as we tweak this. That's a mildly comment and certainly we'll, we'll roll through council so we can do the same. So Councilperson Sap, do you have comment?
I don't have that authority to revoke the use.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, my only comment was to the, you know, the resolution. And I've already, you know, gone through legal with it and such, is to make it fairly broad for the town manager to be able to do two things. One, to react quickly to new executive orders. One, to react quickly to, uh, new executive orders, and then, secondly, to not narrow down, um, the resolution to specific businesses. I don't think we can fit, um, every business into a particular category. So, for example, you know, the resolution I saw this morning, uh, just had restaurants and retail, and then if we add salon, but there's other businesses obviously in town. I, I, I think our, our, uh, town managers have done, done a great job managing that we give them those capabilities, and then we have the option, as it says in section five, to revoke, um, you know, anything, maybe if it gets out of hand.
Agreed.
I, I, I just want to make sure that bureaucracy doesn't get in the way of these businesses being able to open up timely and quickly.
Thank you, Councilperson Sap. Uh, Councilperson Martini?
Yes, thank you. I only had one question about section three, temporary shades and canopies, is that like umbrellas? Are we talking about umbrellas? We're not talking about tents or being set up, uh, that type of thing, which was mentioned in the Orlando ordinance.
You want to do that, or you want me to do it?
Go ahead, Rob.
I'm sorry.
Councilperson Martini, actually tents would fall under that allowable, uh, the temporary shades and canopies. Um, and that's why we have in there and recommended the limitation on the size, twelve by twelve, not higher than fifteen feet. So it would allow for that. Working with Heather, we felt it was better to be more general in how we, um, defined it as opposed to saying tents, because it could be other things that you said, Miss Martini, like an umbrella or something other than a tent, you'd also call them.
Okay, but that, that wouldn't be possible to remove those every day, I would think. If it was a tent, maybe, maybe we need to, um, a little less specific or more specific on that area.
Yeah, I mean, if, if it becomes an issue of public safety, health, or welfare issue, then I'm able to step in and negotiate and resolve those issues with, um, whoever is using it. Section five, yeah, so it does give me some broad authority to do that. You know, we, we, we don't want them to be completely blocking the sidewalk, taking up all the parking spaces and stuff like that. So again, when I see an issue, I'm be able to address it.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
And the other part, related to that issue as well, well, we need to be cognizant of, you know, once they get beyond a certain size, we run into fire code issues and, and other issues that we don't want to have to subject somebody to, that we don't have. And that's, that's the reason for the limitation on the size.
Or we can just add a, um, rather than, or in addition to having them properly or be removed each day, we can have them properly stored and/or secured.
Right, but we're not talking about huge tents, uh, you know, I mean, there's some limitations size-wise, right?
Correct.
Right, right, twelve by twelve, so basically craft size.
Right. All right, Councilperson Martini, anything further?
No, that's it, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Councilperson Williams?
Uh, I'm good. I like the way this thing looks. I like that it's gonna give town manager, um, you know, the room to move, to maneuver as needed. I think everybody out there is looking for something, so, uh, I'm all for it.
Thank you, sir. And Councilperson Andrew, I know Councilperson Andrew's been spending a good deal of time working with our small businesses to see what, uh, what, what we can do to support their recovery efforts as well.
Yeah, thank you for working on this. I think this is a great idea. I, I do have, um, one question regarding, I, I'm, I'm curious as to if there are any need to spell out that any business engaging in, um, or utilizing, uh, this opportunity be, represent that they, they have, um, insurance that covers their operation extending beyond their, you know, I mean, just, just so that we don't run into any liabilities the town then takes on.
Understood, meaning that if they're gonna be operating on public property, that they neymos as an additional shirt on their, uh, existing policy.
Or whatever other protection we need, that's all.
Um, I think that is wise. Thank you, Councilperson. Uh, Councilperson McKinley, any comments, sir?
Uh, no, I, I really like the idea, uh, and I'd like to thank everyone involved for drafting this thing up. It was mentioned about, uh, possibly having an expiration date, but that's covered in section seven. The council can modify this a, at any time, uh, and until then, uh, town manager would have full authority to go ahead and add people or modify as he, as he deems fit. So I like that, and it, it gets it out faster to the businesses, and, uh, I like it.
Excellent, thank you. And yeah, and we didn't want to be really quick and responsive with it. So, you know, I think it's a, I think it's a positive step. I also think it aligns us nicely with, uh, with our fellow municipalities who are doing the same. There's, there, there are a lot of businesses out there that are really struggling, and, um, you know, we want to do whatever we can to make it as easy as possible for, for those folks to recover. So, um, all right, seeing no further comment, I will, uh, I'll request, uh, a motion, a motion to adopt this item. We don't need a time period, is that what I hear council saying?
Correct.
You'd have to read the title, uh, Mayor.
Roger. Um, so we'll make the motion for a temporary use, uh, permit program for certain temporary signs, outdoor retail sales and restaurant seating, including small tents. And that will give, uh, that will give our town manager the authority, um, to, uh, work with our businesses on those items. Do we have that motion?
I'd like to make that motion with the addition that, uh, the one paragraph be changed to, uh, include properly stored, secured. That was the one change that was in there, so.
That sounds fair enough. So we'll take that as our motion. Councilperson McKinley, do we have a second? That was a tie. Uh, I'll, I'll let Councilperson Andrew, uh, be the second for that item, as she's been working hard on, uh, working with our businesses. Any further discussion, council?
Um, I, I just wanted to make sure that those changes that, uh, broaden town managers', you know, abilities to, to, to police this and make decisions, uh, that was already added in.
Robert, do you feel inclusive in that?
Yes, and then, um, it doesn't change the intent of the resolution title. You're just filling out some of the gaps that we excluded, including the, um, uh, certificate of liability on their insurance naming us.
Okay, I concur, and we can also, uh, counsel at any point in time here as we, um, at our next meeting, should we, you know, should staff feel the need to have us, uh, review this again to tweak anything, we can do that, so. All right, so, uh, seeing no further discussion, uh, we'll begin voting with, uh, Councilperson Martini.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, council, and, uh, that, um, item is unanimously adopted. Let me move up back here to the agenda portion of our meeting.
It's our favorite subject, Mayor.
Yeah, no, no, it's okay, I've, I've got it on the side too here, but it, it's, uh, I, I'll print it out for next time. I didn't have printer availability today, so. Um, next item up is item, uh, two, and that is our boat ramp and tennis key policy amendments. Again, I will, uh, I'll have Robert, uh, present this item, um, that is, uh, generally intended to address some of the challenges that we have had with, uh, making certain that, uh, our, our boat ramps are, and our tennis, uh, facilities are reserved and utilized, uh, by town residents as they are intended. Uh, thank you, Robert.
Yeah, and this is not our time to talk about the issues with Bird Island. Uh, that's gonna be a whole separate other workshop that we're gonna have to talk about, on, again, parking, locking, uh, stuff like that. What we were looking at doing is, a lot of the people that were having issues with, uh, have either, you know, borrowed keys or have keys from their, their friends, their neighbors, uh, so on and so forth. Uh, so we wanted some sort of a, uh, mechanism in there. Number one, that we had, you know, the, the keys numbered, um, and then if somebody were to get caught, uh, using the key and they weren't part, uh, they're not part of the household that actually, uh, applied for, signed the application and paid for the key, that that key would be then taken by the town that has town property. And the person's household that had that key would lose that key a year from the date that it was taken. Uh, and the reason for that is if you get a key taken in September, you're only being punished really for a month. As opposed to somebody getting a key taken away in, um, you know, November, where you're getting pretty much punished for an entire year. Uh, so we're looking at amending that, not only for the boats, but for the tennis keys as well. They'll all be numbered, uh, to make sure that, again, we, we document who's using the key, who's, uh, taken out the key. And I know the wording on my executive summary was law, where it says, you know, if somebody in that person's household is caught with the key, meaning that, if, if the person that is caught with the key is not in that household, uh, then we would take away that key. Um, you know, you can leave it up to my discretion, whether it be, okay, well, the reason this person had the key is because I was driving the trailer back to my house. Um, you know, again, the officer that's gonna be out there, or whoever's enforcing it, uh, can use that discretion, and it can come to me as far as any appeal or whatnot to, um, resolve that. But again, this isn't the, the time to talk about Bird Island and those issues. It's just a matter of, um, how do we make more stricter use of our keys for both the boat ramp and the, uh, tennis courts?
And I think, uh, you know, part of what drives this conversation at this juncture is, um, you know, it is shortly time to, uh, to re-up for, uh, keys. I also like to think about this not as punishing, but, uh, a, as a privilege and, um, us being cautious with that privilege. Um, you, you know, we have, uh, you know, we've seen a lot of very serious issues of late, um, all, you know, including, um, a, a death on Bird Island and several, uh, medical calls. Um, you know, I'm just a little concerned in terms of, uh, not only the resources, um, and how we're working to, uh, redeploy some of those resources at better, more effective times and things like that. There's a lot of things that are going on from the enforcement perspective, uh, but what I would like to see is that, you know, a lot of this comes down to personal responsibility, and we need to, you know, we have a lot of folks who need to be doing a little better job in that area to, to up, uh, pull their end of the bargain. And we don't really have an effective means of keeping people from copying keys and distributing those, um, or lending them out just to, to anybody who would like to use them. Um, you know, I don't think that we're looking to, um, penalize someone who wants, uh, you know, a property owner here who, um, is being responsible and, and, you know, like I said, bringing their car back or whatever. Um, you know, we just want to talk about, uh, this as an option to, to have some effective means and teeth into what we're trying to do. So, uh, at, at that, I will open it up for, uh, council discussion, comment, and questions. Uh, we can start with, uh, council. Uh, go ahead, Robert, did you have something you want to add?
Yeah, and this is just the first step. We're probably gonna have to revise some of the ordinances and, um, you know, clarify some of the stuff that's already been asked, you know, in our LDCs, or in our applications that has section six. It's actually, I believe, in section thirty-six or thirty-five. Um, then there's some prior resolutions that were passed, we'll have to take a look at those as well. Um, and, and we also want to make sure that, you know, when we're talking about, um, boats, um, it's, it's, it's boats. It's not like a canoe or a kayak or a paddleboard, um, because we don't want to punish people for using those at, like, Windermere Recreation Center or other areas that they have general access to. Uh, this is just, you know, some recommendations that we wanted to make, and see if you're amenable to them, and then we'll come back with an ordinance that would actually amend what we have in section, uh, thirty-five or thirty-six, um, which clearly defines what types of, um, boats we're talking about and the actual locations, which is Bessie and, uh, Fernwood. Um, because again, we don't have, uh, control over the one over at, uh, on Sixth Avenue.
Correct. Um, also, if, you know, we've, these, these items have not been to Parks and Rec yet, have they?
No, they haven't. We haven't met virtually yet.
Okay, um, you know, I know that it will probably be an item of discussion, but, uh, certainly at this juncture, at least we can have comment, uh, from council and, and, uh, give us, uh, some indication of your support, uh, or lack thereof, and, uh, we'll begin with, uh, Councilperson McKinley.
Robert, I, I have a very sketchy internet connection right now, and when we, when I just, I called you earlier on the, where it says, should a member of the African town, was that changed to, uh, should a person other than a member of the resident's household?
Correct, that's what's gonna be the ordinance, you know, meaning that if somebody that's not a part of that household has that key, then, um, they'll lose that key.
Okay, yeah, other than that, uh, I think it was, is absolutely great, uh, and then, of course, the park pass, boat ramp, uh, issues that are on here, uh, that's not final yet, correct? We're just looking, the, the, we're looking at the idea, and if you, we want something that's enforceable if someone loaned their key out.
Yeah, we're gonna be amending the ordinances to clear, or to pretty much clear up what we already have right now in the, uh, land development code, and also we'll, we'll bring back the actual applications too, uh, so we can get your blessing. And currently, again, by resolution, I think the, the cost is thirty-five dollars per key, um, you know, and whether or not you want to increase that or decrease that is completely up to you.
Thank you, Councilperson McKinley. Uh, Councilperson Martini, any comments?
I have no other questions, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Councilperson Martini?
Uh, yes, I'm, I'm all for making this, uh, a little more strict, so that we have better control over who's using the town ramps. Uh, I've personally seen people who, uh, who, who don't live here and, and come down to the ramp, and they wait for someone else to go in and unload their boat, and then ask them to leave the key in there for a few minutes while they get their boat, sort of like running the gate behind somebody at a subdivision. So, uh, that's, that's something we maybe should address also, or, you know, keep in mind. And when, when would this be implemented, Robert? Would this be, uh, during the next cycle in October?
October first, that's when everybody would be, reissue keys, uh, so we have it all chronologically as far as the numbering systems. And then Chief can address some of the additional stuff that we're doing with, um, uh, Bird Island and getting it through the summer months, but I didn't really want to get into that long conversation just yet, because there's still a few uses that we're doing right now.
I understand, that's, that's a whole nother conversation, but yes, I, I am in favor of this, uh, making these changes.
Thank you, Councilperson Martini. Councilperson Andrew, any thoughts and comments?
Um, I'm curious, is there any way that we can add in here a fine for those, uh, trespassers who are non-residents? So, so we can, we can fine those people who've given out the key, but also those people who are the violators who took the key.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's whether they took it or they, they, they were given, uh, to them. Uh, we do have the opportunity, and we actually are trespassing people right now. I think one is recently as yesterday. Uh, we trespassed a teen for, uh, a year from a park because they were climbing over the barricades. But we do have that opportunity, um, to trespass that person.
Okay.
It's, 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 again, what your comfort level is on what the punishment should be.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilperson Andrew. Councilperson Williams?
Uh, I'm good, I'm all for it.
Thank you, sir. Councilperson Sap?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm all for it, just want to make sure it's, uh, you know, it's got a tight seal on it, that it is enforceable, with like, uh, you know, Chief's comments at some point of, you know, how officers are going to be able to cross-reference. Um, you know, are they just gonna carry a pad of paper, for example, a match-up number to driver's license, that type of thing?
We may, um, I'm sorry, Robert, go ahead.
Uh, no, we'll, we'll make sure that we provide them with whatever log we use, um, as far as, you know, the key in the household. Because again, the, the reason for the numbering system as well is, you know, um, if you have two neighbors, then they'll just pass the key back and forth. So if it's, you know, John Doe and, you know, Robert Smith, next door neighbors, and then John Doe got the key, and then Robert Smith goes over there and uses the key, um, and then somebody, you know, says, hey, this person doesn't have a key, then John Doe's gonna lose his key for a year.
Yeah, I, 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 I think, I mean, everybody in the household is gonna have the same address on their, their ID. Um, so that part's easy, so if the ID does not match, you know, the address attached to the, the number on the key, you know, it's simple. You know, I, I, you know, I'd just like Chief to think it through too, and I don't want to make a big burden, you know, on, on the department too, and, you know, get into conflicts that they don't need to get into. Um, and then, as you said, I, I think the code needs a lot of cleaning up right now, um, you know, cinch it up, I think there's some contradictions and such.
Yeah, and we're, we're looking as far as, you know, again, when you have... Yeah, and we're, we're looking as far as, you know, again, when you have people from other counties or municipalities or anything like that that are, you know, really causing a ruckus, it just gives us another enforcement tool to, to go ahead and stop that.
Exactly, and this is, and we have, you know, there has been conversation with chief, and, and, um, as Robert said, and, and chief can certainly touch on during his report, we are working on, um, you know, several other options, uh, and, and methods to try to, uh, round out, um, enforcement and, and oversight, um, at the boat ramps, at the parks, and, and, uh, and the hours, uh, in which, uh, those are done, so we can try to avoid some of these situations that we've been having late, uh, on the weekends, um, especially since it stays light until, you know, almost eight o'clock. So, um, you know, and some of these have been serious, so I, I feel like we do need to, to, to address this. Uh, Robert, do we need, uh, do you have consent that you need to move forward on this, or do we need a motion?
Uh, I'd actually just like consent because you're gonna be, um, adopting an actual ordinance, uh, to amend some of the stuff, so, you know, if, if you're amenable to this, you know, we can, again, take it to Park and Recreation for a little of their input. You know, this doesn't have to be really put into place until October one, so we do have some time, um, but we'll need to do at least two readings.
Sounds good. Um, so seeing that, counsel, um, I'm gonna, with your consent, I'll instruct, uh, staff to move forward with this item, and we'll vet it through Parks and Rec, um, as well as through the police department, uh, and, and we'll come back for two readings for a full ordinance unless, uh, any, any, uh, individual, uh, councilperson objects here.
No objection.
All right, seeing none, Robert, I think you have, uh, marching orders there. Uh, thank you, sir. Um, and we'll move to, uh, Maryland, Mayor, and, uh, council liaison reports. Um, I'll go ahead and start briefly, I just, uh, wanna continue to thank, uh, I'm sorry, Bob, did you wanna say something, brother? Did I miss you? Okay. Um, it, so we'll, uh, I wanna thank everybody for their support, um, as we've made, uh, you know, continued, uh, decisions, uh, together as a team to, uh, best address the, the COVID response for, uh, the town and the community, um, for being amenable to, uh, some of our, uh, business, uh, support opportunities and, uh, supportive also, and, you know, some of the tough questions that come about when, uh, we close a park, close a boat ramp and that sort of thing. So, um, I do appreciate that support, uh, a- as well as seeing everybody on the virtual town halls. I think we're up to twenty-three or twenty-four, uh, virtual town halls now, um, and, uh, your participation is, uh, greatly appreciated, and I wanna thank, uh, staff, all, all of our staff for, uh, being supportive in that as well, um, and being adaptable. Uh, we're looking at, uh, integrating and opening, uh, our town offices again in a, in a responsible manner. Um, Robert, chief, and I are working on, on what that might look like, um, and ways to make sure that everyone has the opportunity to practice social distancing and, and work in a safe environment. So, uh, we've been very fortunate so far, um, and I'm proud of all of our residents for their participation. I think, um, as I remind everybody on our town halls, this is, this is when it gets difficult, there's a lot more opportunities, um, there's a lot more people, uh, moving around, and that is good for the economy, uh, but certainly we, uh, it certainly gives the opportunity for the virus to, uh, to, to rear its head again, and we wanna make sure that we are, are careful with that. So, uh, you know, let's, uh, choose our, uh, options wisely, and I always remember that, uh, you know, the option and the opportunity is there to, to pick up the virus still because it's, it is around. So, um, just continue to be safe, look out for your families, um, and we'll continue to address things as we go. The, the new order from the governor to allow us to meet, uh, goes until July thirty, am I right, Robert?
Yes.
So we'll be able to meet virtually until then, or if it's safe for us to, to meet, uh, sooner in person, we will certainly do that, but I, I anticipate, um, at the very least, our next town council meeting will be virtual as well as our, uh, as our board meetings. Um, councilman McKinley, do you have anything to add for, uh, uh, council liaison reports, sir?
None.
Councilman Williams? Okay, I saw his head shake, that's good. Councilman Sap?
I'm good, thank you.
Again, thank you for your efforts on the, the water master plan. Uh, councilman Martin?
I'm good, thank you. Uh, I'll have a report next week, or next month, rather, DRB's meeting next.
Thank you, sir. Uh, councilperson Andrew?
So the Waze Committee did actually, um, meet, however, there wasn't a published agenda, so no business was able to be accomplished other than discussion around some, um, volunteer service opportunities. Uh, the members of that committee, as you can imagine, are concerned about getting in their required community service, um, hours for various, uh, scholarships and things like that, Bright Futures. Uh, we're working to try to identify some of those. The business directory that, um, DBC is on hiatus, so it's not really a DBC initiative, but it's still to support our businesses in town. Um, it's something that Mayor, at you and, and, uh, Robert Smith have given me, uh, to go ahead to pursue, working with our businesses to try to put together something to help, um, make our residents a little bit more aware of their opportunities to support who is operating in town, has business licenses here. That's going to require some administrative assistance, and so I'm hoping that I might be able to enlist some of the Waze committee members to work on that with me so that we can get them some community service hours and let them continue to support the town, which is what many of them really wanna do. So, um, I think that's about it. Butler Chain of Lakes Advisory Board still is not meeting and does not have plans to resume meetings at least until June or July.
Thank you, councilperson Andrew. Also, just, uh, um, a, a point, um, there are, uh, virtual volunteer opportunities available, um, I believe through Volunteer Florida and maybe some other mechanisms throughout the state, um, that may be a way for some of those folks, uh, to get some hours, um, for their, uh, scholarships, and I know for, um, for their leadership organizations and such, you might wanna look into that. I'll see if I can send you a link later.
Thank you.
To find those. Um, and thank you for your leadership in the business portion as well as on the, the Lake Butler, uh, Chain of Lakes Advisory Board. Um, there are, we are working also with, uh, with a couple volunteers in the community, Leisha Miller, um, and Suzanne Reagan, and her husband are working to help, uh, help us get all of our graduates recognized. Um, as, as you all know, they have not had the opportunity to do a real graduation, nor a prom, or a senior trip, or a senior skip day, um, so they have missed out on, on a lot of, uh, you know, rites of passage that, that we kind of all took for granted prior to this. Um, they're gonna be recognized, uh, with a banner, uh, and their picture on that banner, uh, in two of our roundabouts. Um, if you know of a graduate and they're not aware of this, please, uh, pass that information along to them, and they can send that picture to, uh, either Diane, uh, or, or upload it directly to, uh, the, the town, uh, website through the, uh, through the link there. Uh, and then we'll look as, uh, seeing how we can do a parade, uh, with those individuals and maybe some of their teachers, and some of their teachers from Windermere Elementary, um, as well as, uh, council members, et cetera. So, uh, just a little opportunity to, to recognize those guys and let them, uh, have a bit of a moment, uh, that, that they have been kind of denied, uh, to date. So, uh, that will, uh, we'll, we'll continue more. If you need more information, it's on our town website. Uh, for staff reports, uh, town manager Smith?
I'm still here, I just had to plug in my computer because the, uh, battery was running low, so.
Okay. Would, do you want me to go to, uh, go to, uh, police chief?
Oh, no.
Oh, okay. Go ahead, sir.
Good, um, it's, it's, it's trying right now, and then, yeah, if you, the other side of this room, it's, uh, a lot of storage stuff, so Renee would probably kill me if I let you see all that, so. Um, no, we've been working on the after-action reports, uh, we're continuing to do that. Um, we're also working on, uh, again, our, um, guide and manual, uh, for not only reopening the town, um, not the town, but the town offices, um, but create protocols should we have to go into this type of situation again. Um, and when you open up or try to finish one section, then you open up another section that you didn't even think about. Um, again, how to slowly open up, um, you know, the, the town hall itself, you know, uh, for rotary, for weddings, for celebrations, and how do you monitor that? Um, so we're doing that right now. I should have the final draft out to everybody probably Wednesday or Thursday, uh, for them to take a look at. Uh, we will be doing mandatory testing for our employees. Um, I talked about that with, um, uh, Mayor Brian and, uh, chief, and the staff is supporting that. Um, you know, we do have the testing capabilities, so if they do test positive, you know, I'd rather know now than once we get everybody back inside of those, uh, buildings. Uh, but typically, a lot of the stuff that we've looked over through OSHA or CDC guidelines, um, for, um, measures to take, um, when there is an executive order, I think we've taken all those, uh, already. Um, so, uh, we've done a good job of that and making sure that our staff has been safe, uh, and that residents are safe, and then now it's just a matter of making sure we continue that, not only with the facilities that we're in right now, but then we have to look at what we do, do in the temporary facilities and then also the permanent facilities, uh, if this is gonna be around in two years, or if this should happen again. So there's lots to look into and hopefully have their report completed. And that's it.
Thank you, sir.
It's twenty-eight virtual town halls, by the way.
Is it twenty-eight? Okay, yeah, I knew, you know, we're, we're, we're getting, we're getting good at them. Um, and certainly, um, you know, I mean, it's been enjoyable to see so many folks and, and to be able to have good information and good, good back and forth feedback from, uh, with all of our residents. Uh, chief Ogden, I see you there, would you like to go ahead and report, sir?
Yeah, sure, appreciate it. I just wanna remind the council that, uh, last month we did complete the, uh, surveillance project on town hall, so we have sixteen cameras now that are situated throughout there. Uh, we thought about that for quite some time, especially considering we help host so many events there. Uh, this is gonna be a great, uh, security feature for us and for the town, and a, a great, uh, thing for some possible, um, safe, safeguarders and liability. Uh, also, I'll get offline with, uh, councilman Andart, but I wanted to kinda mention, if you're looking for some scholarship programs or some volunteer opportunities, we may have some, that's the police department. Um, we can always find a few things to do, but also think about, we're gonna be probably moving to temporary facility soon. Uh, so I talked to Lori today about, um, you know, what do we need to do to prepare for that, so there may be some great opportunities there, so we can get together offline and talk about that. Uh, working with, uh, councilman Andart, I've mentioned this in the past, but we do have off-duty that's gonna be starting up soon. We know that our boat docks, um, uh, ramps probably will be open soon, but I think I'm gonna go ahead and start that off-duty sooner than later, considering what we've been experienced in the last few weeks. We have them picking up, I know, uh, everybody's always concerned, we're always talking about Bird Island, but we have certainly had an increase in the last, uh, I'd say the last ten, ten days to two weeks with juveniles and underage drinking on Bird Island, that's, um, has worked its way out to the roadways and driving and kids passing out at Fernwood Park and so on and so forth. So, we're keeping an eye on that. Just to let you know, what I've done is I've been on the horn with the Sheriff's Office, captain in charge of the, uh, Marine Patrol Unit, who was, uh, an individual I formerly worked with. They're gonna extend some of the hours to the off-duty, which, uh, was at our recommendation. I would like to them to extend a little bit longer, but we'll see how that goes because, uh, they were leaving about four o'clock, so now they'll be leaving a little, a little bit later, and we'll have our folks stay there till later as well. We, we had always planned that anyway. So that'll be, be beginning pretty soon. Uh, on a real cool positive note, uh, Shadrack, uh, King is, uh, in training, he's entering his last phase of training, so it's always nice. I know, uh, people say, wow, he seems like he's been around two or three months, but it takes three or four months of training, um, that's partnered with somebody, and he'll be out there solo, one-on-one. Uh, as he enters into the next phase, the last phase, he'll probably be able to expedite, we have, that's the only phase that you can expedite your training based on his prior experience in training, so we pretty much fully anticipate that happening. Uh, and speaking of him, West Orange Time, I think I saw her on here, Daniella was on here earlier, wrote a gr- great story about him about a month or so ago, and that was just actually picked up by the National American Fleet Speed Magazine, it was sent to me, uh, about two days ago. So I'll forward that to you guys later, it's the same story, but it's really cool to be picked up nationally. And just like, uh, town manager said, we are working on our after-action report, which will include all that and a lot more in it when we're done. Everybody is safe, everybody's healthy. We do have, uh, Sergeant DiStefano is going to be out, um, tomorrow for a surgery, so keep him in your thoughts or your prayers, and, uh, he'll be out for an indefinite amount of time, I'm not quite sure how long he'll be out, probably for at least a week or maybe two or so, so. Uh, with that, and that's all I had.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Brown, anything, sir?
Um, not much, um, we're continuing to prepare for hurricane season, we have our back truck services out, we've been uplifting trees and removing dead and dying, um, wood from around the town and the roadways, we've had a lot of good positive responses from the neighbors on that and the residents. Um, otherwise, otherwise, we're moving forward with our projects, which we provide the projects report, and other than that, we're staying safe, keeping distance, and, uh, keeping our fingers crossed and praying for everybody to get through this safely.
Absolutely, and we would not, uh, wanna add a, a storm of any kind on top of this right now, that would be, uh, that, that would, that would push us, although it is being planned for, and, you know, we are a- as ready as, as we can be, um, we would certainly like to avoid that. Dorothy, do you have anything?
I'm sorry, I don't.
Thank you, it's good to see you.
Good to see you.